Good morning, everybody. We start our meeting with the pleasure of allegiance. I'm going to have Superintendent Henry.
Blood allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the March twenty first, twenty twenty four Rockland County Commissioners Meeting. And on Zoom, we've got Kathy Stacy, we have Commissioner Godu, we have Megan McGowan, we have Jason and Kendra, we have Jude Gates, and we have the sheriff Catherine Mann and that major. What is that rich? Okay, and then who's the number eight bottom? It's June. Okay.
There's one of all the rules.
In the room, we have Superintendent Henry, we have Allison Wacoski, we have Julie Hoyt, we have Commissioner Coyle.
Morning.
And we have special guests today. We have former Commissioner Kevin Doyle and former Commissioner Kevin St. James here visiting. I'm the chair, Brian Chiacello, and we're going to start with our openings. Actually, yeah, unless there's a motion to move.
I think you can take care of that first one.
Yeah.
Or a few. I moved to, this is an opening for fuel. I moved to authorize Senior Director of Facilities Planning and IT to review, evaluate the proposals and return with a recommendation.
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded, any discussion? If not on the motion, Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Well, yes. To send agenda?
Yes, we're tabling these minutes and I moved to approve the March twenty first, twenty twenty four accounts payable is total of two million, twenty-three thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and forty-nine cents.
Okay, in the meeting, on the meeting minutes, motion is the table. On that motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
I vote yes. And then on the accounts payable, any discussion there? Not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Now I'll entertain a motion to move up.
What time does Kathy have?
Kathy's got, she's got to be gone in a half hour, I believe. So if we can move her stuff up, that would be great.
Sure. Move to bring forward the some regrade and position changes. Number four, item number D four.
Okay, motion to move up on the agenda?
Second.
Godu?
Second.
Yeah, the second. So on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Yeah.
I vote yes. Okay, so the first one is the position regrade.
Move to approve a regrade and job description for the Assistant Deputy Register of Deeds as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion to be made and seconded, discussion?
Just that some of these, this regrade is to deal with compression, some compression issues that appears and especially with supervisor. So this is consistent with what we try to do in terms of making sure we don't have these levels of compression.
Early discussion, Kathy, did you want to chime in at all? You're all set. Okay.
I'm all, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Godu, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I, I would just like to emphasize that first I'm in favor of the changes that, that are being proposed for all of the, that all the department heads have, have put forward. And I, I want it to be clear that I, I appreciate all the good work that they've done and that Jude has done specifically on this, or this was passed, sorry. But I want to emphasize that when it comes to budget time, I'm hoping that this doesn't affect the budget in a negative way. And we'll be scrutinizing the overall budget. I know some of these have raised some salaries, which is necessary, but we're gonna, it's important, I think, that we keep in mind that we need to keep the budget in line, even though we've made these changes.
Very good. Further discussion?
Just looking at the fiscal impact of, at least as it really is a registry of deeds, on the overall impact is relatively small in the grand picture of things and it does, again, sometimes you have to do these things for compression. Each, I think each department had a fairly nominal, I guess we'll take them in turn.
Okay, so on the, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Next one, title, it's a position regrade, title change and revised job description.
I move to approve a regrade, title change and job description for the reporting clerk to recording assistant as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Next one's position, title change, revised job descriptions for the.
Remove to approve a title change and job description for the Accounts Coordinator, Recording Clerk to Accounts Receivable Technician as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Just that it's important to note that these don't have any financial impacts, it's just simply a retitle and just how sort of tasking, making it consistent with what the work that is being done.
Okay, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Next one for computer optical technician?
I move to approve a title change and job description for Computer Optical Technician to Record Support Technician as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on this one? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Next one, Records Retention Specialist?
I move to approve the job description for the Records Retention Specialist as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on this one? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Next one?
I move to approve the job description for Records Retention Technician as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes.
And finally, I move to approve the job description for the Deputy Register of Deeds as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion? Not on motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, going back.
Thank you very much. I appreciate.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Uh, let's go back to Commissioner updates. I don't know if any commissioners have anything that they want to share?
Just a couple of things.
Commissioner Coyle?
Um, I, there was just, we had the steel inspection for the new building this week. That was exciting. The other thing is I got to take a tour of the hospice suites, which there's a ribbon cutting ceremony on Monday. And I was really, in terms of the hospice suites, they're beautifully done. They really are, they look amazing and it's so nice. Just some of the thought that went into the design to have more space for family. The sofas convert to beds and there's just a lot of options there and it's exciting, really exciting.
Very good. Commissioner Godu, do you have anything?
No report today.
Okay, the only thing I have is I was asked to testify on a bill in Concord on Tuesday that was dealing with the interconnect issues with ever-source that a lot of municipalities and small businesses are having. There's a lot of delays and whatnot. So I was able to get up there and testify. The room was full. Seems like ever-source is just very either slow or they, they're telling me, or they're telling everybody that there's a lot of people in the queue. That's one of the reasons why it's been slow. But what came out of it was they're treating smaller solar arrays, which businesses are using, and larger solar arrays a little bit different. And of course, you know, they mentioned that this larger solar arrays are a little bit more complicated, which is true. But I think that, and, and the bill was just trying to create rules because there are no rules right now and there's no recourse if something happens. So the legislators in science and technology have heard it very loud and clear that rules are, should be coming forward. I don't know how that's going to help us right now, but I did testify that, you know, we're using our money for a lot of this and it's very time sensitive. You know, we don't want to jeopardize any of that. So, but anyway. So all good, to the county attorney's office, bid waiver request.
I move to approve the LexisNexis subscription agreement amendment and bid waiver request in the amount of twelve thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars for year one, thirteen thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars for year two, and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars for year three, and authorize the chair to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the county attorney.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there discussion? Commissioner Coyle?
Just a couple of things. One, first, is there, you know, I use Google Scholar a lot. Is that something that the, you know, like in terms of there's no cost to that as opposed to Lexis? Now, I know jeopardizing is more difficult. So is that pretty much the impetus for using Lexis as opposed to Google Scholar now?
Um, I definitely think that's part of it. Also, it allows us to kind of have a centralized location for all of the information. I know that something that we were looking into is in previous budget years, we've actually paid for New Hampshire Code of Conduct books. If you purchase them now, they're almost five hundred dollars a piece. And we've in previous years have budgeted for that, but when in this actual program, we have access to that electronically. So we can actually forgo purchasing one for every attorney and actually utilize it in that kind of system. And maybe like get one for like the law library. So that's very much the kind of all having a centralized location. This increase, it ends up being a hundred and fifty-two dollars for that first year, but it does allow us to lock in on a three-year price, which I, which I think is, is important.
That makes sense. And then it's twenty-three subscriptions. Is that correct? Okay.
So further discussion?
Thank you for that clarification and.
Yeah, I just have one question, Megan, if you don't mind. So is this in the, in your budget?
So currently, we had budgeted it for it, like in our current fiscal year at nine hundred and three. That's the last service year that we, we had for the three-year contract. So what we're doing right now is if it approves today, I was going to put it into the budget for moving forward for fiscal year twenty-five.
Gotcha. Again, I thank you. Okay. All right. So is there any more discussion? If not, I'll entertain, well, the motion, so on the, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, we're on facilities.
I move to approve an exceptional request. Versatile policy nine dash two for facilities operation employee JR.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
I, well, my feeling is I, I, my part goes out to this individual, but and I don't think, I can't support it just because of the impact or continuity and consistency across the county.
Okay, further discussion? Commissioner Godu?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Coyle. This doesn't follow our guidelines. I think it will create problem for the county if we make this exception because we'll probably get multiple more additional exceptions. So I, I do not support this effort.
Okay, so on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
No.
Commissioner Coyle?
Unfortunately, no.
And I'll vote no as well, so zero three. Where are to human resources, position repurpose?
I move to approve a repurpose and job description for one correctional officer position to one investigations and safety compliance coordinator as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Just that I think that this position is where things are going in terms of compliance as well as investigations that the time is certainly upon us to make this change that, and this is similar and reflected in other, you know, we've seen this issue with long-term care and things like that, that we really do need someone over in corrections. That is, it's pretty much, it is a full-time job to do compliance, doing the investigations. Well, there's just so much work to be done in that. Right now, it's being tibbyed up and so it makes sense. In terms of the fiscal impact, I think it's around twenty-five thousand dollar change overall, or maybe even a little less. But we can absorb that and it seems like the, it's like a good investment in our overall future. And, you know, as it relates to potential exposure for litigation, things like that, it's really good to have this position, so.
Oh, yeah, Superintendent Henry?
Yeah, well, and we, this is to help out, is what we did, reduced one correctional officer position to try to absorb as much as we can to this. So it would be a very little impacted accounting, but it's the volume we have, those kinds of things, it's just, it's time.
Yeah. Is this, is this going to take effect away or?
It's next year's budget.
Gotcha.
So do we have to, well, it's in terms of an MOU or anything with the union or?
Um, no, what I've learned from the union is if there's unfilled positions, then we can, and I asked you to reach out to them. And I think you got the okay.
Okay.
I know that, but I.
Um, I, I agree, this position is necessary and a good move. I just, I don't like the concept that we'll absorb the twenty-five thousand dollar impact. I'm hoping that Superintendent Henry will find a place in the budget so that we don't have an increase.
Okay. Any other discussion at all? If not, I'll take a vote. Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. We want the long-term care position, regrade, repurpose?
I move to approve a repurpose, regrade and job description for one part-time wellness coordinator position to one full-time wellness supervisor position as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion?
Just, I, I have a question and maybe this is, it appears that the, is the part-time already benefits eligible? That's because it looked like that. So it's not, it's a note that there's no new impact in terms of benefits because there already benefits eligible. And the reason this is happening over in assisted living is.
Sorry.
Oh, is there?
Well, there's benefit as far as retirement.
Yes.
Sorry, but yes, health.
Health and dental, sorry, retirement, yes. But in terms of, this is a product because there's more need because we have all our beds filled and the assistant living facility. So it's like a, I call this a good problem to have and so I support it.
Further discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. For position status change, Sheriff's Office?
Move to approve a status change for one part-time NCIC technician position to one full-time NCIC technician position as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on this one?
No.
Commissioner Coyle?
Go again. Um, just that it's, it's only adding one day and this person already is, has thirty-two hours and is benefits eligible. So really, when you look at the fiscal impact is like, it's pretty, I think it was like fifteen thou, or-ish dollars. It's a relatively small amount. And since there are already benefits eligible, there won't be a significant change.
Further discussion? Does Sheriff want to do anything? Major?
Oh, just that, I mean, obviously, we put all the supporting documentation away. We feel this is appropriate. And this position part-time is already in the union as well. So no MOU is required for that because it'd become a full-time position still within the union.
Okay, thank you. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're down to K, HR, finance, UKG conversion.
I move to approve a discretionary one-time payment stipend to the Finance Office and Human Resources Department employees involved in the conversion and implementation of the new, new UKG Pro system as outlined on the submitted memo dated March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources and Senior Director of Finance.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
Thank you to all the, everyone on that list for all your efforts. I know, we know, we've heard a lot about the challenges of that conversion and the continued efforts to triage problems that come forth. And, you know, this is a small acknowledgement of all your efforts that we appreciate tremendously. But we know that there was a lot of extra hours that went in to make this happen and the impact, because it affects every employee in the county. So thank you for your efforts.
Well said. Any further discussion? So on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Wellness activity utilizing Cigna wellness dollars.
I move to approve a wellness activity elements massage utilizing Cigna wellness dollars as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion on this one?
This has been a huge fan favorite in the past. So I, we are happy to, I'm sure the employees will be happy to see this back again.
Very good. On the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Long-term care services, geriatric medical supply agreement.
To, I move to approve the geriatric medical supply agreement for a two-year term beginning March sixth, twenty twenty-four and authorize the chair to sign on the necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion on this one? Hearing none on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. PAL American Security Contract Addendum.
Move to approve the PAL American Security Contract Addendum and updated billing rates effective March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four and authorize the chair to sign on the necessary documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion?
This won't have any, this will be within budget this year. My question is, how are we looking at it in terms of, because of the new billing rates, Jason? How is this going to impact, you know, budgeting for next year?
And. It will actually still be below what we have budgeted for this present year.
Yeah.
Overall, hopefully this, it's part of their annual increase contract, but hopefully this will also make the positions a little bit more desirable because we have had a lot of openings and unfilled security positions because of our current rates that are in fact presently.
Okay, so how much are you going to, I mean, will we, how much do you think you're going to have to blow up from next year's budget?
Um, I will have to look at that, but I think right now we will be looking at thirteen thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars.
Okay.
Further discussion? Seeing none on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Glendale Dining Service Contract Extension.
I move to approve the Glendale Dining Services Contract Extension Agreement extending the current contract to a June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five expiration as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. We're onto department head updates. I'm going to start with Allison. Because I usually wait for the end.
Okay, sure. I've, we've, I've just been super busy with Chuck. We try and look at departments on the positions and getting ready for the budget. And negotiations has consumed a lot of our lives right now. So that's where we've been. The office has been running fine. We're trying to push out a lot of wellness opportunities and using up some of those Cigna things and working with the Sheriff's Office on, you know, making sure we order, we can get that order fulfilled. I'm just waiting for Cigna to confirm. Oh, they confirmed, Julie told me. So we'll work with the Sheriff's Office on getting that, the order done and get that equipment coming in. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, Superintendent Henry?
Sure. So we've had an increase in our DMA population. We were probably around one thirty-two-ish. We're at one fifty this morning, so. So it depends on the weeks going up.
Even in the summertime.
Yeah, no, yeah, summertime coming. I'd like to thank the coils, the Sheriff's Department, state police and the courts. We had an individual who was injured in a, in a shooting and was going to be a significant impact on the county to cover costs and cover us, everybody covering it. So with the collective effort, we were able to put him out, basically kind of released until the person has an opportunity to heal and come back from us. But it was a collective effort across the board. So that was a huge help, everybody jumping on. Again, we've, a lot of our time's been eaten up on working on the contract negotiations and the budget beyond that. Just staying busy.
Good. Very good. Now, Sean, make your statement.
It's gonna sound like a part of line here, but in negotiations, you're busy with that.
Broken record.
Yeah, yeah.
Did I add that you need negotiations?
Deep into the spreadsheets and many calculations, budgets, this quick reminder, it's a March twenty-ninth deadline. Because that's Friday, very first falls on the Sunday. So again, this is the legal deadline for departmental budgets. Harold's Saturday projections going up to elected officials and who are heads of their departments and also division directors tomorrow. Again, those are details down to the individual line item and person. Otherwise, as was meant, you know, thank you very much commissioners for approving that one-time stipend for those individuals heavily involved in that UKG transition. I mean, I know that, you know, Ben especially has spent many late nights and weekends and then Lisa's day, because I've been here, Lisa stayed very late many nights as, as well. And I know it's been, again, we're dealing with kind of, unfortunately, right now I have a glass deficiencies. We're trying to work as best as we can with the program as it is and trying to push on to make improvements as well. So in fact, we, they're actually going to be working on doing a, a consolidated notch of a direct deposit file. Where right now we're having announced seven direct deposit files for two each by weekly payroll. So otherwise, it's very busy working with Emily and I have been working with Long-Term Care as far as on that new DHHS grant. As far as we're going, I, I, Jason, I'm sure talked that more because I was moving the other day about it. And overall, just, you know, very busy as usual. Things going on with HJC too, so.
Yeah, very good.
So I feel like we should rename the Who's Gone, the Pinball Wizard for Chuck, which is the Spreadsheet Wizard. But I do want to say that, I mean, again, just reiterating every, you know, sort of the dedication and the collective here at the county, which is the, that so many people worked so hard on UKG to benefit every employee, to make sure, you know, that payroll went through and they're, they got everything they need, everybody's, everyone was taken care of. And so really, that is like a, just a dedication to the whole, which is, you know, at the, at the cost sometimes, it's like putting the Rocky Ham County family at times ahead of, you know, personal family. So again, I don't think we, thank, we can say thank you enough.
Uh, we're going to do gates. And that room looks really bright and.
No blinds in here, so it is, it's pretty bright, but it's nice to actually see a bright blue sky, truthfully. It's very.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even if it is twenty-eight degrees out. Also, while in facilities, we are busy. We've had three major follow-up walkthroughs on that HVAC project. I'm pretty excited. I think we should have some really competitive pricing on that. I'm looking forward to it. We're working budget, 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 very busy with budget, pecking away at capital projects. Things are going very well with the building. We're working with, you know, multiple departments, the DES for all of our permitting and et cetera. Things are going very well. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Can I go to the Sheriff's Department? Sheriff Mercedes?
Uh, good morning. Everything is well here. The major ones, the.
I know, yeah, I just, I wanted to really echo what Superintendent Henry said about the collaboration on the, being involved at the initial arraignment. I thank both the, both the coils representing the Hampstead Police Department, the state police and the jail. Because I think all of us being involved at that initial arraignment to get the proper electronic monitoring on that subject obviously alleviated a huge burden that would have been pushed towards the jail and ourselves while that person needed to get the medical care. So thank you all for that.
Thank you very much.
That definitely helped. So we appreciate that.
Very good. Thank you. Jason Smith.
Good morning, commissioners. Happy to report that we have no further COVID cases in the nursing home and assisted living community. Masks are no longer required. However, we do provide them if individuals would like to wear them. Uh, we have three cases reported of the flu and assisted living community. We are asking everyone to wear masks there. It seems the cases have stopped spreading, so we're happy to report that. And we've been working with Department Health and Human Services on infection control processes. In addition to that, we've also had the New Hampshire Department Health and Human Services conduct an onsite infection control focus assessment. This is a non-punitive. We welcome them to our community to help us ensure that we're following all regulatory standards. And so they walked away really with just a few recommendations and nothing further. So I was happy to report on that. Again, let's see. Um, again, uh, let's see here, we have, uh, been in collaboration with our marketing company and, uh, provided you with some updated information on our rate sheets that will be added to our, uh, new, um, brochures when family members come to tour our community. In addition, we've been working with FSA Compliance Group as part of our annual, um, compliance work plan for our mock survey for the nursing home, which is scheduled, so we'll be working on that for, uh, April second, they'll be here for four days. Um, in addition to that, I would also, uh, I'm delighted to announce that the completion of the dedicated hospice suites are are finished, and so we will be having our ribbon cutting on March twenty-fifth at three P M on D one unit, which you are all welcome to attend. Uh, I just want to say thank you to the commissioners without your ongoing support and, um, encouragement to continue to enhance the culture of uh, our care, uh, here for the nursing home and assisted living community, this would not have been possible, so, uh, thank you so much. Um, and truly, this will promote, um, resident choice dignity and personalized care, um, at the, uh, most sensitive time in an individual's life, so thank you for that. Um, we continue to work on budget, um, for, um, both communities, uh, and yes, we met with, uh, internally with, um, uh, the finance department regarding the grant. Um, so we have processes to, uh, work on with that, in addition to that, we also met with, um, both, um, adult day program coordinators and we, uh, told them about the new grant process and they're all very excited to learn about, uh, the funding and, uh, we have been working um, on some individuals, recruitment initiatives, um, working with human resources, software, uh, marketing, website development, all the things that the grant was approved for, so we continue to work through that. Um, and that's pretty much it, just, uh, a further announcement with Silverthorn, um, Maria, the program manager is no longer the program manager. Um, there's been some changes, um, where she is currently presiding, so that might be an opportunity for us uh, to have our own program coordinator that really understands, um, adult day, so we're excited to explore that opportunity as well.
Good, good, thanks Jason, um, I can't really, my eyes are really bad from this distance, in the center box, I don't know if that's Megan McGowan? Is that, I know she was here earlier, so what, no?
Jenna.
Jenna Finley?
Okay, don't know, I don't know her, um, all right, so it looks like we've got all the department heads that have recorded, I'm going to ask Wayla if she's got anything that she wants to add.
Sure, thanks, good morning, um, work continues on the current website, um, it actually looks like it, I may be able to just completely forget about building a brand-new website because I've stumbled across some things and fixed a lot of things, and, uh, so, yeah. Current health of our current website is, is much improved.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for all you're doing, it's like that, I mean, you really are a wish.
I will say to the department, this is my department, when on the website, I'm like, oh my god, things have changed.
Yeah. It's really exciting.
And I said, yeah, maybe we've been working on it.
Yeah, it's pretty neat that you, uh, you've taken that off, it's really great, thank you for everything.
Uh, we're going to go to new business, old business, I don't know if anyone has any new business they want to bring up. I don't see anybody coming to the forefront, so we're going to move on to public comment at this time, um, anybody in the public that wishes to address us, please please do so, I don't see anybody, I don't know if the former commissioners have anything that they wanted to say?
Well, I haven't been in this building for a few years and I would just say that it's incredible to see, Rockingham was always the well-oiled machine and continuity has stayed, uh, the right people are in place and it's it's hot-warming to see everything that happened still.
That's nice to hear, thank you, um, Kevin, appreciate that. Um.
Thank you, Miss Finley.
Do we have done public?
There's Miss Finley.
Miss Finley, uh, I don't know which department you're with, or if you, if you remember the public that wants to say anything?
No, I'm actually just trying to get the bid results.
Oh, okay, on, uh, do, which item, do you?
Fuel.
Oh.
Fuel.
It's only being open today. So we won't have the award until.
No, no, well, I understand the award part of it, I was just looking for the results, when you don't, not going to read them out loud, is that it?
No.
I think that's in front of us.
No, we just had the opening on it, so we don't typically read that.
Oh.
The opening for fuel.
Yeah, we'll award next week.
Yeah.
Did you read the results? Because I've been waiting for that, I didn't hear it.
No, I don't think there was any results that.
We don't have them, they're just, we're just authorizing the senior director of, uh, facilities to open all of them and evaluate.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you, have a great day.
Thank you. Um, I don't see anybody else in the public, so, uh, we have non-public, Allison?
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically.
Um, I want to thank former commissioners for coming in, you're always welcome, obviously. And. Good to see you. And, uh, just want to say, I mean, you guys kind of split away in some of these departments, so, uh, your decisions continue. Good decisions. So thank you very much.
Hey, Coyle.
We're going to take a couple of minutes break.
Um, I.
Out of pocket. Is it out?
Oh, yeah.
I moved to enter into ninety-one A calling three and invite Jason Penray and who else?
I'm sorry, are we?
Yeah.
Just you.
Oh, that's. I'm going to go grab.
You just seconded a contract.
That's it.
Was that seconded?
No.
Second.
You're the second, so on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I vote yes, if I take a sample in a brace.
Uh, we had two non-publics, the first with regards to corrections, uh, I don't see any need to seal the minutes. With respect to the second issue, I move to seal the minutes indefinitely, um, they, because it relates to, uh, strategy with respect to union negotiations.
So.
Thank you.
Motion and seconded, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Take the final motion?
I move to adjourn.
Motion's to adjourn. So here's seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Unanimous, have a good day.
All right, thank you, see you guys.